In fact, we've been having, trying to, regular meetings, Jamie and I, and talk about legislation. That's, then I just wanted to thank you for that because that's helped me kind of understand some of the things that we may need, Mr. Mayors of council and the city, to do to help schools when it comes to legislation. And you'll, when you get an AML, you'll see there's a lot out there for changes, about how we can support the schools and let's take a federal fund, do those kind of things. But, so, we've had some really good conversations and I appreciate the superintendent being here and giving us kind of a state of the schools. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you for your time. And I will let you know, unfortunately, I do have a hard stop at 6:30 because I have to sit back out with the belts because I'm interviewing families this week as well, so. But I appreciate the time and the opportunity to speak with you. This is, this is my seventh year as superintendent, and this is the seventh year I've had the opportunity to present. This is one way that we, you know, have an opportunity for the city council to kind of get some ideas of what's been happening since the last time I had a chance to come out and speak with you and to also start to put some things in your mind as far as what our financial picture is liking, is likely to look like as we begin to approach the budget process for that financial system. So typically, what I usually do is I spend a little bit of time talking about the good things that have happened as well as challenges that each of our schools are facing. So, Dan, are you my scroller person?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, the first we look at is what's going on with the elementary school. So, we do have a new principal this year due to some unexpected issues in the prior year. She has come from the North Slope, and she's been bringing in a lot of great things when it comes to the conversation about cultural activities. If you have an opportunity to see things that are going on, pictures, everything like that. So, for example, we had an Indian Day celebration, which was awesome. And she even had Jacinda Benandevic, who's our Miss Alaska Native Brotherhood, came to present to talk to students. We had Marie Green, who's the chair of the Indian Circle Pollard Council. And we also had one of the actresses from a Canadian show called North of North. Have you seen that? Which really talks about Indian culture. And it's based in Canada, of course, but that's where yeah, culture spreads across multiple countries. We are continuing to have some, see some improvements when it comes to reading achievement because that has been a significant focus for quite some time. And so, we are, that's, will be a continued focus likely, and but we are starting to see a higher number of students starting to score closer on grade level on their assessment. So, that's good news for us. We have a lot of special education staff this year. We've actually been able to hire some peer professionals, which has been a challenge in the past. So, that's good news as far as supporting that burgeoning population. And there's also really extensive focus at the elementary school on family engagement. That's something we're policy district-wide, but we're really trying to find ways for families to feel that they can come to school, be welcomed, participate, and see themselves in their culture in our school. Okay, so what are our challenges? Well, like I said, our special education population is rising as overall as a whole. It has slowed down a little bit, but we've seen a really significant increase in what we call intensive students. These are students whose needs are such that they may need more support in terms of a peer professional working with them. They may need support in terms of equipment or anything else that they need to be able to access the curriculum and continue to learn. So, there are still some challenges. We are still relying fairly heavily on some outside consultants that are coming in to work with our teachers to make sure that they have all of the strategies that they do. And the also nice thing about the consultants when they come in is they're also working with the families of those students to help support those students and make that a seamless transition. And then again, just supporting the staff. Anytime we have a change in leadership, you know, new ideas and everything like that, you know, we're just working to make sure that, you know, we support our staff. We make sure that morale stays up, that people don't feel overwhelmed by any particular changes. So, those are just some things we're dealing with at the elementary school. Okay, when we look at the belts, our administrative team, our principal, we still have Ms. Smith has come back again this year, and we have a new AP, Holly Harlow, who was our former math teacher. And she has been with the school years as well and is just really, you know, heart-charging. So, they're a really good team, and I'm looking forward to seeing some of the things that they will be implementing as far as school improvement this year. So, we're continuing with what we call PBIS. That is Positive Behavioral Intervention and Support. And the goal of that program is to reduce referrals, which often mean out-of-school suspensions, as well as helping with just some general behavioral issues. We set clear expectations school-wide, clear expectations within the classroom. And, but we are seeing some improvement in reducing the number of overall out-of-suspension and the number of just referrals to the office in general. We've also, Ms. Smith has come up with, the second year in a row, with a school improvement plan. So, the, in the past, a school improvement plan has usually only been implemented when a school had to set a specific designation on the state's accountability system. However, we've decided that all of our schools have room to improve, whether they are low enough that the state wants to put a label on them. So, the conversation is every single school is working some type of improvement plan for themselves. Belts has chosen to focus on absenteeism, develop on a curriculum, and also we have visible learning. This is the instructional model, the Fisher-Bryde instructional model as well. And this, and last year started at the end of the year, moving into this year, they have a site council now. So, that site council has, is less heavy on staff and more heavy on parents and student voices. So, that gives them an opportunity to provide input on leadership decisions. So, that's going in definitely something that we're excited to see happening, moving in the right direction. When we look at the challenges that we have, unfortunately, vaping has not gone away. It really rose kind of during COVID, and it still is a continuing issue. We really try to balance education with punitive measures. We don't want to suspend students out of school as much as possible, but it is a challenge. And a lot of students, it's not just, you know, tobacco vapes, but we also have students that are coming to school with marijuana-based vapes. They're not that hard to get ahold of. You can order them over the internet. And, you know, kids are trying to find ways of getting away from getting caught with the vapes on their person. So, that is something that we really can continue to do. They're oddly addictive. I tell people, your vape is not your grandma's cigarette, is all I can say. So, a lot of work to be done with that area.
Oh, what about zin or anything that chew? Zin or tobacco pouches or other joints?
You know, we, I mean, cigarettes are almost like completely non-existent. We don't actually, kids, you know, smoke.
No, like the tobacco pouches, like?
Right.
Yeah.
Chew, things like that. Pretty minimal. That's again, not something that we have seen significantly. Any problems with chewing tobacco. For the most part, it is, you know, vapes are the primary issue.
Yeah, I've seen, heard of a lot of kids getting caught and then suspended and on the bus passing it around, and there's a lot. Heard that there's a lot of kids doing it.
Well, you know, we do, if, if things do come back from the, from our bus drivers, you know, and things like that, you know, we still, because that's still considered on district grounds while they're riding their bus, then, you know, that's something that we definitely can, you know, we can impose discipline. Anything from just being, you know, suspended from the bus to actual other suspensions there. I haven't heard that from Ms. Smith or Ms. Harlow, but I can definitely go back and just ask them, you know, if you're hearing more issues about chewing tobacco, especially haunted buses. So, we can, we can talk to Ms. Morgan and ask her to have her bus drivers keep their eyes open for something like that as well, so. But thank you for sharing. The Belts does have a formal designation. They got it last year, and they have it again this year. It's what they call a B, the technical term though, the, the acronym is ATSI, which means Additional Targeted Support for Improvement. And what they do is they look at our sub-populations as well as the overall performance of the school using an accountability algorithm, which includes attendance, it includes performance on state tests, includes our graduation rate. And last year and this year, the one sub-population that did not score particularly well were our special education students. Part of the challenge is, a lot of our students, when they get to middle and high school, they have attendance issues. Testing usually occurs over a variety of days. We have kids that just struggle with, with certain extents of being, having the stamina, if you will, to sit in front of a computer sometimes for an hour and a half or longer and finish just one section of a test. So, they've been working on trying to make sure the students are there, kind of building up that testing stamina on the math assessments, math growth, because those are not high-stakes assessments as far as, you know, they're work for us as, at the district and at the teacher level to kind of get a feel for where students are. So, that's, they've been continuing to work on that. And then we also need to work on actually achievement and not proficient. The algorithm has kind of a quirk in that if we have like less than 20% achieving, it's like zero. Zero to 20 is like the same thing, and 80 to 100 is like the same thing. Something statistically, I kind of scratched my head. I did take statistics in college and don't remember that being an issue or something that we worked on, but that's how their algorithm is built. So, we do have kids that are actually proficient, scoring proficiently. But because there's so few of them in that special education population, that it's like none of them work. It's the same impact when it comes to the scoring algorithm. So, we are working on that specifically to figure out how can we support those students, both in attendance, make sure they're here, taking all parts of their test. And then we're also working on helping them make sure that they have what they need to score better on exams. And then we have been struggling with, with some staffing issues, you know, that's, there's a lot of challenges. We're now floating around the conversation around the six-period day and some of the seven-period day. Those of you who have maybe been here long enough may remember when you went to school, it was six periods, and it moved to seven periods at one point. And that actually would impact to some extent staffing because it might reduce the number of electives that are needed for students when it comes to graduation as well. But we are working through those and in light of the budget as well. Okay, and then, of course, we have our charter school, Angel City Science Academy. They, again, their approach is very different. It's based on project-based learning. It's cross-cultural learning where the students work on project, on the same project across multiple disciplines over some multiple weeks. We have a new principal who has been, was at Belts for a couple of years. Then moved to ACSA as a teacher and is now our principal. And she's working with their academic policy committee and the teachers in order to continue the traditions and their routines and everything, and not shaking up things too much, which is, I think, is a good move on her part for that school. We have our very first international teacher at ACSA, and he is doing an amazing job. Very, very happy with him. And we have a special education care professional back this year who's also a Belts graduate and is doing very, very well with our students as well. So, there are some good things working. There are some challenges for, even for ACSA. The increase over, in overall special education students seen at the other schools. Angel City is not immune to that, so they are seeing an increase in the number of special students with IUPs as well as they have intensive needs students. And for a certain extent, this is kind of new to them. You know, years ago, we went back a decade. This wasn't something that they really had to deal with, the number of students with IUPs that came up to be. ACSA was relatively small, if any. And they tended to just be like learning disabilities. So, it is a challenge. We've been trying, the district now has given them a, they have a half-time special education teacher who's come over there in the afternoon. Their peer professional is full-time, but it is challenging still. They've been having conversations about feeling like they need to expand their space. We've been trying to figure out about utilization of space because they feel like they want a separate space, a larger space for students when they have the, they needed time specifically with the special education instructor or if they need some type of pull-out or support where they need to sit with the peer professional. And the principal has also, you know, expressed that she would really like to have a more private spot if she has to have a disciplinary conversation or some others. Her desk is currently living is not, it's set away, but it's also accessible to one classroom, which is pretty much active all morning. So, we are working on having some conversations about what can we do with what the space that we exist or anything else that we can make changes for to try to address their needs. Their student achievement, they are, again, they're doing their own school improvement plan to focus on some of the academic bases that are definitely, a few areas where they take a look and they say, we need to work on improving student achievement in a couple of areas. I think primarily writing is going to be their focus for this coming year. All right. And then lastly, we have our extension's homeschooling program. The enrollment remains strong. We have 35. This is about, we were very close to that last year. So, I know, obviously, this year is a trend statewide and nationwide where after COVID, we had more families that chose to go the homeschooling route and just not even decided that they liked it after they tried it. And so, again, this remains a good viable option for our parents. So, we're happy to do that. And our big teacher has been working with homeschooling for several years now. Does a really good job with doing some community kind of activities where the homeschooling community has a chance to get together and engage in activities for their students and work with and support each other. And we also have some special education students that are involved in homeschooling as well. And so, we also have to have a teacher that works with and visits those students to provide services for their ideas. So, what are challenges there? Well, unfortunately, our graduation rate at extensions is not where we would like it to be because a lot of our students will exit with belts because they're going to try homeschooling. They're having, not having success in a brick-and-mortar environment. So, they're like, well, we're going to try homeschooling, especially at that high school level. It's not easy being, I think a lot of, there's a misconception, if you will, that homeschooling is somehow going to be easier. In most cases, with older students, their parents, they may not have anybody adult at home overseeing them, even though it's homeschooling, their parents still are overseeing the instruction. But the students at that level do have to have a certain amount of intrinsic motivation. Some of them unfortunately really do tend, do struggle with not having that teacher every day providing the instruction and providing the support. So, we do have unfortunately some students that do end up dropping out of our homeschooling program as well. However, there is also some impact to our overall funding because of the way the state of Alaska chooses to fund homeschooling students versus brick-and-mortar students. So, currently, a student in brick-and-mortar class goes through the whole funding formula, the little sausage grinder. And along the way, the numbers kind of could grow, and then they get multiplied times the base student allocation. For homeschooling families, they don't get added into that formula until like at the very, very end, and then they only fund 90% of the BSA instead of 100%. There's been a discussion with legislation previously about changing that, I imagine, but we will see that again in the self-competition as well.
So, what does that mean in terms of dollars? Like, a brick-and-mortar student will get, generate how much?
Well, it depends. Well, because brick-and-mortar students, Genevieve probably can do that off the top of her head faster than I can, but they feed into the school size, they feed into the district multiplier, because every district has a multiplier.
What was it last year, if you recall, or this year? Once you add all of those in, the average brick-and-mortar student generates 15, 20, 30,000?
Yeah, I think it's around 20.
And how does that, and how, say it's around 20?
This is a lot lower.
How do homeschool students compare to that in terms of funding? Is it like 25%, 50%?
I think it's more, Genevieve, you might have to help me out, or I don't think I've ever sat down and said, this is how much a student brings in versus a brick-and-mortar student.
So, the correspondence students, they don't go through the entire funding formula. They just come on at the very end. So, they only bring in 90% of BSA, whereas all the rest of the students go through all the funding formula, meaning they're receiving multipliers and increasing. So, we, we went, for this year, for example, we went from 639 students as our basic enrollment for brick-and-mortar. And after they went through the formula, it turns that into a 1,803 number. So, it's times three, and then they will, then you multiply that by the base student allocation. So, correspondence is significantly less.
So, what was the brick-and-mortar number?
It flows through the funding formula, and it's, it's based on several different factors. But for this year, if you're just looking at the totals, it's basically three times.
Okay. I was just wondering what like, the average brick-and-mortar student, the funding is, yeah, but what's that? Yeah, a third of one.
Yeah. So, Genevieve, what he was asking was what, what is the actual per-student funding, brick-and-mortar student funding from the state for this year? Do you have that number handy?
Well, our base student allocation is $6,660 per ADM.
Okay.
Okay.
So, it's about 6,000?
I was just, and that's with all the additional add-ons for the school size? Yeah, that's what I'm trying to-
That's the base, the base allocation.
I understand that. Does anybody else understand the question I'm trying to ask?
Yes.
You're looking for definitive number of-
Just average number. And what I'm getting at is, you know, maybe it's further in the presentation. Enrollment has dropped, I think, by about 25 students.
Over the past couple of years.
And so, what does that mean in actual funding?
Right, right.
Are we losing 100,000? Are you losing half a million dollars?
Yeah.
That's what I'm, that's the question I'm asking.
I understand what you're, what you're trying to ask. And if you don't have it handy, I can get it back to you. But, so, your brick-and-mortar students, you take that 65,000 and you multiply it by .9, and that's how much?
Yeah, there's quite a few adjustments to that BSA.
That's what the correspondence student does.
So, it's about a third. Whatever the magic number is, it's correspondence is about a third.
So, like I said, it's, we would rather keep them than enroll in one of the other statewide programs. But it does have an impact because, as you can see, because I do, I do have the graph.
I would be curious.
You can see how much that the correspondence.
If somebody could give me that number of what it is for this school year?
Yeah.
You know, for the average brick-and-mortar student, how much in funding does that represent?
Yeah.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Yeah, just get it to, well, Dan and I will distribute it out, but, yeah.
That's about $18,000.
Thank you.
And the correspondence is just under 6,000.
Perfect. Thank you.
There you go. She just had to do a little number and she was there.
That's great. Thank you.
So, we also do-
Share capital, I, you just couldn't.
Well, we, we have multiple, typically families will choose homeschooling for the majority of their students. So, I think we're graduating like six students out of extensions, which is a pretty higher number this year, which represents the fact that we have some of our longtime homeschooling families are also aging out. So, you know, but typically what we'll see, we'll see a family and all of their kids, for the most part, will go through the homeschooling program. And then you have kids where just, you know, one or two will come in, not maybe they'll, maybe they'll homeschool when they're younger, and then they move them to brick-and-mortar when they get closer to high school. It just really depends. So, we'll kind of have to see how the enrollment will fluctuate over time, so. Okay. And then the next slide is basically talking about what has been going well for us as a district. You know, we have been making some headway. We've had some focus on the facility needs. Our re-riffing project at Belts is nearly complete. We have run into some unexpected challenges, one of which may end up being a design flaw, that we're going to have to kind of wrangle with the architect, engineers, et cetera, to make sure that that envelope is nice and non-heaky. The, we have funding from the state for the BELTS campus emergency generator. That project will probably either be this coming year or the summer or the following summer, because we're trying to get the roof project wrapped up. We are challenged with our, our maintenance team has been doing an absolutely great job, but they are still understaffed. And when you take on those projects, you have to have somebody keeping an eye on the day-to-day things. As just well as the overall performance with any type of the contractor. So we'll just kind of have to see. We want to get the roof project completely buttoned up and put away before we move on to that. But it'll be good to have the generator because there could be, we've had conversations in the past about BELTS being a backup emergency evacuation site. And the conversation has always been that's difficult to do because our generator is too small, it just is. And it is also old and there were some issues for some reason that when we turned it on, if you deal with it, it tends to, it has some issues with venting the fumes from the diesel fuel properly. And so we end up with the fumes that fill up the, unfortunately fill up our facilities building for a little bit till they get it all aired out. And then it keeps shutting off periodically, so we have to have somebody manning it almost twenty-four seven because it overheats, it shuts off. And they got to wait till it cools off and turn it back on and get it back, back on again. We saw that fun a couple of years ago when we had a really big storm over the Christmas break. And all of us that were living up there were without power for about seventy-two hours and dependent upon the emergency generator. It was interesting, but it'll be good to get the new one replaced and online to help take some of those.
Did you get the boiler replaced?
The boiler has been replaced, but we're dealing with some of the other boilers, but we're making them, we're keeping them going. We're at a point where probably we were able to work with one of our subcontractors who did some work to probably get about another year's life on one of the other boilers. But at some point in time, we're, we're probably going to have to do another boiler replacement because we have three. Two are running almost at all times during the winter and the third one is backup, but the other one, if one of them comes offline.
What is the annual budget for maintenance and operations? Is it still about one point five?
Yeah, I think it's about one point three right now. There's a, well, that's, that's the, that's the budget for pretty Nana, for what's contracted. But we do have some other things in that whole M and O budget overall. It's a little over two million because we have our utilities and some other things that fall under that category.
And Nana's still charging their fifteen percent fee?
That's correct, so markup. We do get around some of the, sometimes with the large ticket item, sometimes we'll go directly, work directly with the vendor for some of those things.
If I could, one just last question on that. Has there been any further discussion about looking at alternatives? I know, I think maybe when the previous city manager was here, there was talk about the possibility of city public works taking over facility maintenance and just moving budgets around. Has there ever been any more after the plan? Was there any further kind of discussion or has anybody even done like a back of the napkin math calculation to see?
Yeah, we did some conversation, we did some look at it, and the reality is, is that the amount of savings. Because if people become city employees, then they are involved in PERS as a, as a retirement system, as opposed to what Nana has as 401K. PERS is a twenty-two percent contribution overall. So I think between the two of them, it ended up being not many save, not as much savings as we would like. So not enough really at this point in time. And the other thing that we had, the other conversation that we had is that because of the, you know, the school district, there is a, the only non-compete clause that we have in our contract with Nana is that whoever is the maintenance director could not be hired back by the school district for a year. If they could go to work for the city, that would not, we would obviously not be violating that clause. But, you know, it, we could come back and have the conversation, but I think that there was also some concerns with talking with the Nana staff that, you know, we don't have a lot, but we do have them and they were, there were some, we never really got deep enough in the weeds to really have the conversation. So we don't have the ability to literally look and say exactly what hourly rate each of those Nana employees are being paid. Because it just comes to us in hours, we can tell many hours they have, but not the rate that they're, that they're being paid. To say where would those individuals fall if they came on with the city? Because you guys have your own range scales and you have your own agreements because they would have to fall under that. I don't know if there were some issues with the placement there. But that did kind of get put on the back burner after Mr. Steckley left as well.
We can, we made, well, the second week of December, I think, I believe, we, anyway. That's something I'd be glad is mentioned occasionally, so, yeah, let's, you and I can talk about that and see. This winter would be a good time to look at it.
Sure, absolutely. We've always been open to that. One thing coming out of all the money that we put into it is that, you know, we use a great, a large, very large chunk of our COVID funding to upgrade our HVAC systems. And we are now starting to see, I think the impact is starting to come out, come down in lower, lower heating fuel usage and lower utility costs as well. Because that was the hope, invest in it and then long-term we would see those improve. So we are starting to see some improvement with those numbers. It's likely that we may see some continued with this roof replacement because we are, you know, upgrading the R value of the roof that's going on there that's been replaced as well. So hopefully we'll get into, energy is such a huge portion of our budget. It's what they were working on. So, you know, the, our school board has changed. I don't know if there's anybody that's on the board when I was originally hired, but I was sure that's a pretty good thing that they always skip into the curve with all the changes. So we are continuing to work all together and that's one way that we can make good progress together. And then, again, we've always talked about how well our community supports our school and students in a variety of different ways. So that's something that, you know, we've always tried to promote both the board and I, and we've always appreciated when those community does step up. Okay, so if you look at the next one, this is the, you have an idea where our enrollment is. So the very, very top line is our overall enrollment and you can actually hit a high in FY twenty-three, which is seven hundred and twenty-three students total. And if you can see, we actually from six, from last year about this time to this year about this time, we're staying pretty stable. So last year about this time, we had six hundred and seventy-one, and right now we have six hundred and seventy-five. So, you know, we've, you know, it's fluctuated a little bit, it's gone up, it's gone down, but not overly dramatic. We did see that drop in FY twenty-one and that, of course, that was the year, the big year of COVID. So you could also see the very, very bottom line, of course, is our homeschooling program. And you can see that big bump in FY twenty-one. We had a lot of families that just wanted their kids out of school for whatever reason and decided to try homeschooling, but then it didn't come back down. But it never went back to the same level that it was. We used to be around fifty to twenty and now we're around anywhere between, it baselines a little bit between low of twenty-five and a high of thirty-five throughout the year. So you could see that homeschooling is still something that.
Excuse me.
But we have seen, and, and the big change that you see, those, those two kind of greeny blue lines in the middle. The one at the top is BELTS and the one at the bottom is elementary school. You see that big drop? That's because we moved, oh, sorry, it's elementary at the top, BELTS at the bottom. We did move sixth grade from the elementary school to the high school several years ago. So we went from K, it used to be K-six, so twelve, and now we're K-five, six, twelve. So you kind of see some changes in there. But, you know, we are, they are fairly close to each other in size right now. There's not a whole lot of difference between the total population at the elementary school, the total population at the middle high school. And the flat line right there, that's the charter school because they have, they have their space for sixty students and they routinely fill those seats. All right. And so the last couple of things I have is the challenges that we anticipate. Funding is going to continue to be a concern. So there's a lot of, again, a lot of people think, hey, at school we got a whole bunch more money last year from the, from the legislature and the conversation as well. We really needed about eighteen hundred dollars to increase the BSA to kind of, to kind of offset the huge growth in inflation we saw in the back of that funding for so long. We got about thirty percent of what we asked for. And it was actually, kept the funding from FY twenty-five the same as what was in FY twenty-six because the, just the state had given us some, they've been kind of filling the gap with kind of this one-time money here and there. Now at least we know the BSA is permanently increased, which, you know, at least that's better than having to hope and pray that they might come up with that. But our costs are still continuing to rise. We still do have, you know, we, all of our, our individuals, our staff, the, our, like every other staff, you, that's the way schools work. Another year, you kind of have a little bit of a bump built in. We're hoping to have some conversations. We don't know if another BSA increase is going to be palatable to the legislature or not, their own budget will. There's likely conversations about potentially inflation-proofing it or kind of building in some small increase this year. We need to look at our special education population. Like I said, it's rising. IDA, which is the federal government funding for our special education students, has never, has never met the need. That's been a longstanding conversation since IDA was passed, I think back in the fifties. Our transportation costs are always creeping up, our food service costs are creeping up. We were very lucky and then our health insurance had almost had a very, very, very tiny, tiny increase overall. Which is, you know, other districts I know are talking about ten, fifteen, twenty percent increases in, in their healthcare costs. So we've, we've been really lucky that we dodged a bullet with those over the past couple of years. But we're seeing insurance increases in liability. Just about everything else is going up, all the vendors that we have are charging more. And so that will continue to be a challenge. So that means that when we approach our FY twenty-seven conversation, sorry, just FY twenty-six, let's say FY twenty-seven, we may still have to have a hard conversation about additional budget cuts. We did reduce, we dropped three teachers out of the budget from FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six, two at the elementary school due to some, some of the cohorts that were delivered. But we had to keep our kindergarten class. We decided to keep three, which was lucky because our cohort is relatively healthy. Ideally, we get sixty kids every year into the elementary school on average. And then we dropped downward, a couple of them are closer to like forty, between forty and forty-five. Which is two of our cohorts right now, which is first and second.
What was the average per student for brick and mortar students? The average funding amount in FY twenty-five? If FY twenty-six is eighteen thousand per student on average, what was it in FY twenty-five prior to the BSA increase?
It's fairly close to that because last year we got a one-time increase for FY twenty-five. That was.
That didn't carry through?
Almost equivalent to a BSA increase of six hundred and.
Eighty?
I want to say six hundred and eighty. So what that means is that the amount, the overall amount of funding that we got this year, last year and this year are actually not a whole lot different. So, you know, it's not flat, it's, it's still flat funded, but it all.
It come up for twenty bucks?
That's what it was per student, in fact, we're going to increase it. Because we're going to be, say, at seven hundred. And the one-time funding was like at, at six hundred and eighty additional per student. So which, which is equivalent of about thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars more.
So in terms of revenue, your budget for this next fiscal year is going to be very similar to last year or this year?
And possibly, but we're, like I said, staffing is always, you just kind of never know whether we're going to hire a teacher that's, you know, a fifty-five thousand dollar teacher with, that is a single and only wants their own insurance or a ninety thousand dollar teacher who brings over a whole family and that's their selection for health insurance. That's the one thing that we can't, we, we kind of try to budget for a middle ground basically, and then we just have to wait. That's why we're going through this first budget revision.
But your total, but your total enrollment actually increased by?
Yeah, it did increase a little bit and we increased the number of intensives, which really helped because if you remember last year, we talked about it in the hole. But, and then of course, you know, with the, the city choosing to reduce its appropriation by seven hundred thousand, we also had to figure out where are we going to come up with that?
Same kind of question for intensive, pretty, intensive need students?
Intensive need students.
How much additional funding do intensive need students pay to use or generate?
Yeah, one intensive need student is the equivalent of thirteen brick and mortar students.
Say that again?
Thirteen, thirteen.
Thirteen?
Yes.
So eighteen thousand times thirteen is what the average intensive need student generates in funding?
Yeah, well, they come, yeah, so they come in a little later in, in the, so they're in, in the pot, so it's, yeah. So it's not quite that we just take that and multiply by.
No, I mean, that's close enough for me.
Yeah, it's only, because you have to decide, just, it's, it's, it's the whole funding formula, they, you know, they have all these little multipliers that come in. And at this point in time, it's like, now we're going to add in the, the intensive need students. But they're on average, I think around, correct me if I'm wrong, they're like, maybe around seventy thousand?
Yeah, close to that, it's about eighty-six thousand.
Yeah.
With the increase in the BSA now.
Correct. Yeah, but.
That's good information. I had no idea that it was that significant of a difference.
And that's usually, that's a lot of where the funding comes from, to hire the peer professionals.
Sure.
So the revenue increases and we bring in more intensives, but we also, the offset is, is that typically those individuals require additional staffing. So it's not just, you know, ooh, free, you know, extra.
No, I understand.
It's offset to a certain extent by increased expenses that comes along with those students as well.
One more question.
Sure.
As a percentage of the total student population, is the percentage of intensive need students increasing?
Yes.
Why is that?
Yeah, because last year I think we had, I want to say somewhere between, I think we had somewhere around twenty-four, twenty-five intensives and this year we have thirty-two. Two of which came into the, enrolled in the district, passed the deadline for us to be funded for them for this year. Because that's also part of the challenges, the count period is when they determine, this is the number of students that you have. Doesn't matter what, it was before, doesn't matter what comes after. It's just in that count period, who's enrolled and how many of those twenty days are they enrolled? Because, you know, if they're enrolled the full twenty days, we get the full funding for that individual. When it comes to these intensive need students, they're also saying, do you have an IEP written and identify some as an intensive student by August, October the first? That's also something. And so we have a student, if we have students that transfer in and they were identified as intensives and then they're prior to district, then we still have to get our IEP, our IEP.
They still have to be reevaluated to make sure.
Our district. But if we have a student that comes in after that count period and either, for some reason, they were not identified previously, you know, in the, in the district. We have come across that. We have one student that has some very significant needs to support, but for some very odd reason, we've never been able to find in the two previous districts they attended that they've been funded, but we still are required by law to provide the services that student needs.
Is that an annual process, the evaluation?
Yes.
So every year?
Yes. IEPs, an IEP meeting has to be held every single year.
For every student?
Every single special education student. We have over a hundred and fifty.
Wow.
That's a lot of meetings.
That's a lot.
If you think of our special education teachers, and every student must have an annual IEP meeting. They're what we go through what's called the reevaluation process where they say, do they still qualify for services every three years?
Do they, have you increased the amount of, the amount of students tested?
We did see an increase in the past couple of years. This year it has, and a lot of that was attributed to the fact that, you know, during COVID, and that was something we saw kind of across the state. We had a lot of students that, that weren't necessarily being referred. And then, you know, until we got to the point where it's kind of, we got to start playing some little, a little bit of catch-up with that. It's definitely, last year it started to taper off and this year we're seeing just a fairly small amount of students. So we don't anticipate an continually increase. But, you know, we are seeing a rise in a lot of our neurodivergent children coming into the school district, you know, and, you know, some of them, depending on where they are, some of them function very well independently, others need a lot of support as they're kind of settling into school. So just. school. So just really kind of depends.
So did you say you have a hundred and thirty?
A hundred and fifty total special education students.
That would qualify as intensive needs?
Thirty-two of those are intensives.
Oh, thirty-two of those, a hundred, okay.
Correct. Yeah, not a hundred and fifty intensives.
Okay, alright, no, I'm just trying to-
Our district this size, yeah, that would be really, really difficult.
That's fine.
So, yeah.
I had a question about other structural budget components on the BSA, is right, kind of the hot word that everybody hears about.
Yep.
But there's also the Alaska School District area cost differential. And do you think that that differential for NOME is actually reflective of our cost here?
I think the last time that they did the cost differential analysis, probably over a decade ago. And that is one conversation. So the state education has a subcommittee that's a education, like reform, you know, workforce, or whatever you want to call it. And they, their work is probably against in over two years. And one of the conversations that is likely to have is, we're having a conversation about, does the foundation formula need to be reexamined? Whether those formula itself, the cost factor multipliers need to be examined and redone? That may be something that, that, that the legislature may choose to take-
Does the school district itself look to see what, I mean, I know that other school districts are running rural schools.
Yes.
But, you know, when we look at all the school districts around us, they go from one point seven nine one, one point six six three, one point eight two four.
Yeah.
And I would just say, anecdotally, it always seems like NOME gets short-changed in those state calculations. When you look at, you know, state geographics, Bethel has a fifty, Cotsby has a sixty, NOME has a thirty-seven. So it seems like things are perpetually, NOME ends up being on an island kind of by itself, and we get looked in with Dillingham for evaluations of cost and things. And, and I just, you know, we, right, it's a legislative number that they come up with, but you start moving those in the right direction, and all of a sudden that has big, big impacts down the line. I just wonder if the district has been doing any sort of documenting, looking, analysis, compared?
No, we have not, because unfortunately, there's not, you know, the, the legislature will run their own studies and, you know, they will, and that's how they'll make the decisions during the process of those studies. I don't know if there's certain data that we can help give them to help inform those particular outcomes. But it's never been something where the, the superintendents go and we say, I mean, there's been a lot of conversation about, hey, we really think you need, you need to take a look at this. You know, of course, we're always compared to Anchorage. Anchorage is always one. They are one, and everybody is considered how, how, you know, close you are to Anchorage. But, and we are also on a little bit of an island because, you know, our surrounding districts, which are North, West Arctic and BSSD, don't, in the most part, they don't have, receive a contribution from their municipality because they don't really have one. They're in organized boroughs. And so they're funded very, very differently. Obviously, when you get them to North Slope, you know, yeah, it is a appropriated city, so they do have a city appropriation. But, you know, they're a city with a lot, they're, they're larger, and they have a lot of different kinds of funding sources and everything like that. So then our slope typically often has more money, just do. So, yeah, you know, and I always felt it's like, you know, we're, we're kind of a really, really interesting district, and you really take a look at everything. You kind of seem to fall in the middle of everything. Kind of in the middle of just about everything. But I always tell people we also have a little bit of everything. That's when you talk about school finance. We have a charter school, we have correspondence program by having municipality, and we have like, you know, we have different schools, but we're still considered a single site as well. So, but none of our schools are like small, small schools. They have their own little weird multipliers, that type of thing, because of the economy of scale, you know, because we have some districts with small schools, very small schools, that are sometimes struggling to stay open. And they had to close because you have to have at least ten. So it's not an issue for us here. Okay, so a few other things there is the, something that's been, it's a conversation about the entrance upgrade project, which would add to the security and the ADA access for both elementary school and the middle high school. That was something that the city has in their budget, but when we took it out to bid, the bids were coming back significantly higher, and the district was not in a position to give anything. We're going to be trying to reach out to some of our community partners, things to see if we have, if they would be able to make some donations to kind of help make up the difference. We'll kind of have to see how that works. We're also taking a look at what's called the COPS grant. You might have heard about that. The COPS grant does not cover any construction, but we are looking at, see if that perhaps helps out with covering things like the buzzer system, the closed camera, the intercom system, as well as we're looking at potentially seeing if that could, we could move to like a swipe card system as opposed to physical keys, because they should cover that, because that's considered a safety upgrade, that they specifically exclude in their grant any actual construction on buildings. So that might be something that then might change the scope of work that we take back out to bid. We'll just kind of have to see.
Do you think with all the contracting and construction work going on in town, that there might be more interest now than there was whenever the last time you put that entrance upgrade project out of bid?
It could be.
Because a lot of construction companies here are looking, some of them are looking for additional projects to keep their careers busier while they're here. So I'd, I'd be definitely looking at that. That's how we've picked a couple of, gotten a lot of projects done for my employers. Existing contractors already in town, hey, I can, I'm already here.
Yep. Well, it's definitely something, yeah, reach out to Mr. Police and take a look at getting our, our-
It'd be my suggestion, especially if you've got the money there to do it.
Yeah, it would be great, you know. It's just a case, in that case of bringing up the materials. And it's not a, it's not a large project. It's not like a lot of, a heavy materials project.
It's an important project.
Yeah. So, you know, doors, things like that. The biggest thing with that is somehow, for some weird reason, doors are like really difficult to get to the supply chain. Why? But that's been something we've been dealing with. But, yeah, so there's definitely, we're probably going to go back out to it again. Our major magnets, we have not actually asked the state to put, we've not submitted any applications for any of our additional major maintenance projects for a couple of years. First of all, we're working on the ones we got funded. Secondly, you know, they, they give you a five-year window from the day that they say they've awarded it from that year. But we, we always have, our district is assigned to thirty percent cost match for any program, any, any type of project that gets funded. And since our CIP fund, we have not been able to, it's been a struggle to put any more into the CIP fund to build up and have that thirty percent. It actually costs us money to put the applications together. Some of them, we're going to need upgraded condition surveys because they're a little old. And again, that costs money, going to talk to the engineering firm and have them come out and do that. So we haven't put anything back out. And I know that major maintenance is going to be a focus at, in the legislature this year. They just put out the lists for this year, and found it very interesting. The first project on the list, the top project on the list is about seven hundred thousand. The next project on the list is thirty-five million dollars. So if the state decides to put money into the capital budget, they might get the top two projects done. There are over a hundred and twenty projects on the list. So that's one huge problem our state has, is, you know, our buildings are, you know, and we have our own challenges, but there are a lot of buildings around the state, school buildings around the state that are worse state than we are. I think on the construction side of it, Stebbins is the number one, and that would be because, you know, they had a fire. School almost burned down. So, so that's where we are when it comes to major maintenance. You know, it's, we can put money into it, but then there's no guarantee it'll get funded. And then the next year, you got to put your application together yet again.
Have you added any, any more money into the new apartment fund that you have been?
No, we're actually pulling money out of the apartment fund this year. So in the current budget, we, we reduced the, originally, originally, we were going to pull out two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the apartment just to make our budget balance, and we're also using some of our fund now. And then when the city made the decision to cut their appropriation by seven hundred thousand, we pulled that out of the apartment fund. So now, right now, we're able to, with kind of our changes and everything like that, staffing, to reduce that amount. But we don't know if that's going to last, because we also have to go back and now, you know, see how things actually play out over the course of the year. So now we're pulling out three hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of it, not putting money into it.
So it should be good.
There is money going into it from rent, but we're still transferring out three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And that subsidized rent, right? You have a subsidized lower cost rent?
We have always subsidized. It's the cost of housing there. But I have, you know, I am, since I'm the landlord, I have actually been trying to raise the rates a little bit. It's still the cheapest place in town. I will tell you, the apartments are, it's an old building. It definitely has its issues, but they're, they're spacious. We've tried to keep them as renovated as we can. But people get in there, they don't want to get out because nowhere else are you going to find anything for that. You can get a three-bedroom home from us for about sixteen, sixteen hundred dollars a month.
With all of the new Norton Sound housing units coming online, I assume in the next twelve to eighteen months, maybe sooner, I don't know. Have you thought about doing something similar, you know, by going out to private landlords, seeing if there's availability, leasing units, and then whether the, the district, you know, decides to subsidize those units or not? Basically doing the same thing you're doing in your, the units that you own, except you'd be working with landlords to do the same thing.
Well, so-
Because in my mind, that would be extraordinarily cheaper, much more cheaper for the district to do something like that, as opposed to, you know, trying to build their own and dealing with all of the operating and maintenance costs, you know.
True. We still have operating and maintenance costs of our current building.
Because I suspect vacancies are going to loosen up a little bit.
It would be great, because in the past, we have had staff that have chosen, yeah, they've been able to find something else out in the district, rent homes, and some people that stayed here long and actually purchased homes.
That way you could ensure availability for your new teacher children.
Yeah.
So why don't you do that?
But we just kind of have to wait and see exactly what would happen with, when those apartments come online.
True.
You know, and sometimes we'll bring in somebody and they have a spouse that, if they have a spouse working for the hospital, they-
So is housing still a critical need?
It's still a critical need. My dorms are full. They were full last year, they're full this year, and that's the dormitories. And I only get those, I get my staff two years in the dormitories. A lot of them will, will want to get on the waiting list for the apartments, because once somebody's in the apartment, I don't-
They're not leaving them, right.
But the dorms, it's only two years, simply because of just that shared living space. It's difficult. It can be, it can unfortunately have some negative impacts on staff relationships. You can imagine having to live with all of your coworkers?
No.
I think everybody here would be like, no, thank you. I'm happy to see them at five, since the back of them at five o'clock.
Do I have some career?
So that's why I kind of, I used to want to do just a year, and now it's kind of going to be two years simply because of the challenges of my new housing. But, yeah. So we do continue to have some challenges. All right, so wrapping it up, because I do have to try to get out of here quick, because I have a micro interview. The next slide here is the historical contribution of the city of NOME. So the blue is the max that is allowable. The red is what the city has chosen to give us for appropriations. So with the change this year, the city coming down from its high of eighty-nine point five percent of max in FY nineteen is down to sixty-two percent of max for this current year. We received the, we always receive the statement from the state of Alaska that states this is your taxable property. And for this, yeah, here, it went up for the state, the city by forty-four million dollars. So your city clerk and your city manager probably have a copy of that notice that they, I don't know if they showed it with you or not. But, yeah, so-
That's taxable property and not-
That's your base. That's what the state uses.
That doesn't include any tax, because they have a large number of taxes.
That's what the state uses to determine your minimum and maximum. So, yeah, so you guys, it went up considerably, like forty-four million dollars, so.
I kind of feel like we should have started this PowerPoint presentation with the money part at, should have kind of been in reverse. I have probably about five or six other kind of money budgetary questions. Can we send them to you? If you can take a look at them another time, I know-
Absolutely. I can help you to do that, or, you know, we will be doing-
Maybe the other hosts can stay online.
We will be doing with the school board.
Right, yes, okay. Oh, we have Genevieve is here, okay.
Even if Jamie has to go somewhere else.
Yeah. And we start our, we must probably do at least one work session, at least, at least one, when in the past we've had quite a few, work session with the school board. And you are always more than welcome to come and sit in with our school board work sessions when we do our budget dives. Always welcome to that. But, so this is, you know, and of course, you guys all have a physical, a copy of this. And then the very, very last slide here is really just kind of laying out some of our major maintenance challenges. These are things that are, that we know we have to get them done, but we're concerned because we, our capital fund is dwindling, and we're not able to replenish it like we would like to. So these are all things that are, that are coming. So as Corin, as you mentioned, third boiler, another one needs replacing. We rebuilt it. The elementary school roof has a lot of leaks. It will be significantly less than Belts because that's a much smaller building in terms of square footage. And this one is not a full flat roof as well, the elementary school. The grounds need a whole bunch of work. We just finished doing a survey, because that's step one. We have, we hired an outside surveyor that's just finishing up his survey of the grounds at elementary school. I'm sure, you know, some of you've been around for a while, are very much aware of all the, you know, challenges of what was originally basically a flat plot of land, now has all kinds of elevation changes from one inch to the other. We need some windows replaced. That's a big, that's a big energy loss. We have a lot of windows, like at the district office, the windows of elementary school. We already have the, the seals are broken. They're not, it's, you know, the buildings have shifted and moved just enough that the windows are not fully properly seated and sealed. And some of them just, right, windows that won't close properly, which is also an issue if we ever have to evacuate through windows, which we could potentially. We've got a lot of plumbing and electrical concerns up at the campus. It's just very, very old. We have a lot of things, breakers are popping constantly because, you know, becoming a code issue just in some areas. And our equipment and our fleet vehicles, I mean, we really technically need a new loader. You know, our, it's not the, it's not the John Deere, it's, sorry, escapes me. But that one is, and it would probably cost us three or forty thousand dollars to buy a new loader. You know, every year we-
You're talking about a front-end loader?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A Volvo. It's our Volvo that needs to be replaced.
Let's talk about that, because there's three or four of us in town that need front-end loaders. And if we could partner up on some of those, we might be able to-
Yep.
Or, how many hours a year do I need that piece of equipment? Okay, let's split it up.
Break in price.
Oh, we know it, but you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, we're all using a personal cloud.
You can help you two hundred hours when it's all at the same two hundred hours.
But anyway, I'd be glad to, let's talk about that, yeah. Vehicles, same thing.
So, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Well, and like I said, unfortunately, I do apologize that I have to zip out of here. But you're welcome to email me directly any further questions that you have. And I will make absolutely certain that you all get the invitations when we have our budget work sessions. They're very casual with, we, we run ours, you know, and so it's the same thing. We present, board asks questions, you know, we talk about ideas, and we try to talk about several of them, so that we kind of get a feel for, you know, we have time to make revisions before we have to bring the final one from the city.
Is it possible for Genevieve to stay online?
I'm sorry?
Is it possible for Genevieve to stay online? I think we've got some financial-
That's up to her. She's in, she's in Texas, so it's, uh-
That's what I'm asking you.
Almost eleven o'clock for her, but Genevieve, are you willing to stand in line for a few minutes and answer a few questions?
Yeah.
Because I think Adam's question-
Sure. Okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, guys.
An enthusiastic. She's got her second win, Genevieve.
You know, specifically kind of around the current responsible use of funds, things like that, really, I think it's the, probably the school board's responsibility at the end of the day. But I was reading, as, as I'm new to this position, I'm reading through city ordinance, right?
Oh, go ahead.
There's actually a report of expenditures to the council. Has, has the school been, and, and to be clear, it does say, when required by the city, and maybe the city just hasn't been asking for it. But does the district send over any statements on a monthly basis or anything to the city?
I expect that we consider our financial report to the board each month as that information. So that's published on the, on Board Book online, and anybody can pull that down. And I am not sure if the board secretary sent that out and sees it to anybody at the city or not.
All right.
But there's no reason why we can't just add somebody like
Yeah.
Yeah, send the financial stuff to Nikki and then we'll distribute it. Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, we can add them if one of our people is just automatically goes to the
Okay, yeah. Yeah, Genevieve, you're, you know, Gene, if you have to do that, that'd be great.
And then I had, is there any update from the district on House Bill fifty-nine SDEC and, and what steps the school board or district leadership is taking to prepare for that, but potential budget implications when that becomes law? I know if we're kind of, if the school is struggling to balance things right now, what do we do if there's potentially a hundred and twenty less students in our district, yet we're still maintaining and operating the same square footage and all of that stuff? Have you done any, any budget analysis or anything on that?
No, actually, I have not. That sounds more like a Jamie question.
Right, and, and that's fair. Like, I was listening to, when they were discussing the legislature, you know, the state says, oh, well, pupil transportation is revenue neutral, it doesn't cost anything. Well, that's literally because you're just taking money from one school district and transferring it to another school district. So at the state level, they're saying this costs zero, but imagine if you're in Newham, we had to get the same number of students on the same bus route, but there's way less pupil transport for it, and it just seems like there's this big elephant out there in the room that nobody really wants to look at, so at least we're going into it eyes wide open.
Well, and our pupil transportation has never paid for itself. We always have to subsidize that through our general fund as well, so it's definitely not been neutral for us.
Yeah, you know, and that, trying to fire my last question, because that kind of segues into it. I think right now, we have a CFO, we have food service, we've got maintenance, we've got operations, we've got education consultants, Fed consultants, that have all been outsourced. Is there anything else that's being, I'll just say, it seems like we're hollowing out, we hollowed this place out in an essence where everything subcontracted out. So when we're talking about, you know, and believe it or not, people at private companies, NANA management services do calculations and figure out, okay, we can get fifteen percent and sell this to the public that we're saving money, but at the end of the day, even if we're paying twenty-two percent to have actual employees do it, well, that's money going into retirements and things, and it just seems like whenever I look at the school board's budget, it's just, we just want to continue to do more of the same, and I'm just wondering when we're going to really try to look at this from a fresh perspective, if at all. And again, probably more of a Jamie question, sorry.
Yeah, and we, and we do run those calculations, and we have run the calculations for all those different scenarios, and of course, even our board has directed us to look at those as well, and so we do do those calculations, and, and as long as we see that we're getting the best thing for our buck the way we are, then that's why it's staying this way. But for some of the positions that are outsourced, it's hard to find anybody, or we did not find anybody in person.
Can you talk about this next year, when you guys are formulating your initial budget? Are you guys going to start assuming the minimum city contribution? Are you going to start assuming last year's contribution, or?
That would definitely be something that we have to discuss on our end, and I know Jamie would discuss that with you guys as well first. Our first iteration is going to be January thirteenth, and so I'll need to figure that out, a couple of weeks at least in advance of that.
And I think, gosh, I've got maybe one more here, but I think I'm, I'm okay. Thanks, Genevieve.
Jamie and I
Is that it for me?
I've got one more question for you. This is Kenny Hughes. So the Alaska mining license tax law provides a fifty percent education tax credit for mining businesses making contributions of cash or equipment to eligible educational or vocational institutions in Alaska. I, I believe that you are a qualified institution. I'm just wondering whether or not you know whether you've received any funding from this source or not.
I don't know. But if someone is writing it off on their taxes, that would be something on their end that they would do, and we do provide donation acknowledgement letters that has our EIN number, so that people or entities can do that.
I'm sorry, if I can come back for two more questions. Has the school district had any missed opportunities for grants, grants where you've put in them, been approved, but actually not followed through on them?
Not that I'm aware of. We, and Jamie will say this too, it's hard, impossible, really, to find grants that can just pay for a teacher, a regular classroom instruction, instruction teacher. A lot of our grants are for that extra additional things, and even the federal grants have the supplement, not supplant rule, so it has to be something supplemental and nothing that we are already paying for. It won't just take something we're, we already have in our budget and pay for it. So that's always kind of the, the issue, where we wish we could find a grant where it would just pay for, you know, a couple classroom teachers, but
No, no, right, right, but so to the best of your knowledge, there's been not any situation where grants were approved, but then the money ultimately wasn't spent, and it just kind of, for, for a lack of staff to process them or something like that?
We always try to send a grant to the best of our ability, based on what is, what is allowable under the grant, so there, of course, not all grants are fully spent one hundred percent, but we do aim for that.
Got it, and I guess my last thing is, it's more, again, perhaps Jamie question or, or thought, but maybe at some point it would be nice, or maybe more for Lee, it would be great to potentially have an opportunity to go look at our city facilities, our, our schools, and just do a walkthrough. I know I'm incredibly skeptical, I won't hide it, about NANA Management Services, I don't think we get a lot of bang for our buck, even though we continue to hear they're a great partner. But I just, it'd be interesting to actually see things firsthand.
Well, that's part of, and I mentioned that, you know, I've got, in fact, one I missed tomorrow, a report about training, but part of what I would like to do is go out, you know, January, February, go look at facilities, I'd like to do in January, and I want to do all this, not just for the schools, but for our organization, when we come to you with budget, to go, you remember we were out there, and there was this giant hole with this big whatever? You got it. I mean, people have, you know, you're, it's just easier to deal with, it's not this intangible. So yeah, and with schools, Jamie and I meet second, I think the second week in December. So we're touching on the very thing you asked, what's the starting point? And that's, that's important, so, and I think, Genevieve, what she and I talked about, Jamie, I'm sorry, is I would bring, and you're welcome, Nikki, that Genevieve and Nikki and myself and Jamie will sit down in December and talk, because I need to know, where do I start? So that's, that's a, you know, so we do that, you know, and I, I've always with counties, gone to the school boards, you know, we funded the bulk of it, but in a mutual budget and update session, you know, now, they were interesting, but I think they're necessary, so you know all the players are talking. But yeah, I look forward to doing that and getting you guys out there.
Genevieve, one quick question. Do you know when the NANA management maintenance contract, when the management contract expires?
Oh, good question. I want to say it's the end of next year, but I'm not, I think, I'm pretty sure it's the end of next year, our, our fiscal year, FY twenty-seven at the end of that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I've got. Thanks for staying late.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
We got pizza here from the little slice I'll shoot to you. Great collect.
All right, signing off.
Thank you. Thanks, Genevieve. We'll be seeing you.
Okay.
Yeah, I would really like for the city and public schools and NJUS to really sit down and, and look at what some consolidation would look like, whether it's snow removal, whether it's maintenance, whether it's finance, whether
Equipment purchasing.
Anything like that, because
Oh, I agree.
We've been talking about this for quite a few years, and, you know, every year, each entity sort of financial situation becomes more challenging, but we still seem to, for whatever reason, not want to dive into those details. And I think at least several council members feel strongly that this is an area that we could really look at to save
Sure.
Save money and, and generate some more efficient services. So I really want us, this, before we approve, you know, the, the budget for next year, that we actually look at this.
There's some, what I call low hanging fruit, and we can do those and develop those relationships and then build into them, but there's, I, I feel like, based on what I see, there's some low hanging fruit of bringing some organizations together on a number of things.
You know, of course, everybody's got to be well Twenty percent, it's just an example, if we could absorb twenty percent of the cost of the outside, of the, of the NANA maintenance contract
Yeah.
And using existing employees without increasing
Yeah.
You know, payroll on these other, you know, on the city or NJUS, I mean, we should be looking at these things.
Oh, absolutely.
Instead of just saying, oh, well, we need to just keep funding the school contribution more and more, without looking at corresponding cost-saving measures. So I really want us to do that, this budget cycle, and not just say, oh, we'll take another look at it, and then the following year, oh, well, we looked at it and we didn't follow through.
And on that point, the, the synergies are also there, you know, you've got, I imagine the school has periods of the year where their maintenance needs are high and main periods where it's low, and the city and, and do those necessarily overlap directly, or, you know, during summer, are janitors be doing something else, or during winter, city staff?
That's what I'll tell you, I'm having some major conversations about that right now, where you've got these organizations where, wintertime, I'm not saying people aren't working, but there's really nothing to do, so, and I think even HR and I talked about that. How do you, so I'm trying to get my, my hands around the winter stuff. Yeah, HR. Sorry. Oh, no, she's good. We, but anyway, those are things we're talking about right now. I mean, they're, again, it's low hanging fruit, so am I getting productivity for those hours? So let's take a look, but I think it's all of us.
And I'd be open to joint work sessions too.
Oh, yeah.
With the school board and city council, maybe the NJU board, just kind of
The admins are one thing, but I need, it's good for me.
What is each entity comfortable with?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So
Hello, young lady.
So that's, I really want us to do that in the near future.
Awesome. That's the kind of stuff, I love that stuff. Oh, yeah. This year, the January, February, March will be pretty busy on, because I want to get into budget much earlier with inside and outside agencies to give us plenty of time to keep you guys updated as we're stepping on, okay, here's a direction, are you good with this, or should I come back over here, and just having those continuous conversations. Yeah.
Okay, looks like we've got time for about a six minute break before we start moving.
Hi, how are you? Adam?
Hello, Adam.
Yeah. You're a sexy representative. Great. Great.
Seven oh four PM. Check my call roll. Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Green.
Here.
Councilmember Lust.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
He's absent.
Excuse?
Yes, excuse.
Okay, Councilmember Martinson.
He's absent.
Excuse?
I haven't heard from him, I don't know.
He texted me right about the time that we started the work session after I had texted him first. And he said that he forgot to let us know he wasn't going to make it and he's out of town.
Okay, I guess we consider that to be excuse.
Okay. Student Representative Stasenko.
Here.
All right.
Looks like we have a quorum present, thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval thereof.
Motion to update the agenda.
Sorry?
Yes.
One, two, Adam and Les Gunderson. We have a couple of things that we're placing for you to add to the agenda.
Right, there is a resolution of the Rome Common Council commemorating Veterans Day. And.
A communication?
A communi.
We've got some communications and then I've got, you know, about your training, a couple of little things. That don't require action, but look, I'd like to get the veterans thing done.
Do you need a motion to modify the agenda?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Henderson, seconded by Miller to modify the agenda. Is there any further discussion on the agenda modifications? There are none, make a call or roll.
Uh, Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Lust.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson. Agenda is passed.
All right, motion carries to amend the agenda and now on the main motion approving the agenda. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Okay, Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Lust.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries, the agenda is amended, is approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes, they're there in your packet. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
I want a motion.
Second.
Henderson, Miller. Any discussion on the minutes? Check my call or roll.
Councilmember Lust.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
All right. Under Communications, first item, September two, twenty twenty five, Noam Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. I guess that's FYI. Item B, the September ninth, twenty twenty five, Noam Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. And no discussion, all right, over your information. Uh, November fifth, twenty twenty five, Alaska grown cannabis and co renewal. Present for your perusal.
Information at this time.
All right. And item D, November fifth, twenty twenty five, US Army Corps of Engineers public notice of application for permit. The applicant, Artic Classer Grilling and Mining LLC.
You know, if anybody has questions, if they'll get those to us, we can send them up to the Corps. Or if anyone from the paper or the radio, if people have questions, they'll submit them to us or just forward. We can get them to the Corps, so. Sometimes you get one.
All right, and item E, I guess is the, uh, City Rome Presents twenty twenty five Christmas Extravaganza, Friday, December fifth, twenty twenty five, at five thirty PM at Old St. Joe's in Anvil City Square. For details, you can call the city, that's four four three sixty six hundred or email cityevents@normalaska.org. Should we enjoy live Christmas music by gnome artists and a special visit by Santa Claus.
That's right. Am I crazy, Santa, I'm not Santa, but Christmas suit I bought at Fred Meyer, I like that store, I've never been in.
Are you going to be Santa?
No, I got a Christmas suit now, why don't you tell them about Santa Claus?
Christmas suit, no, it's Santa's suit.
No, now, if I, if I.
Pack number twenty thirty, I'm good.
We were in the ugly sweater section.
And I bought stuff. Yeah, he showed me around Anchorage, so, yeah.
That also.
Uh, yeah. On D, and you've got a copy of this, Monday, December eighth, I know some are going over to Anchorage, uh, but from eight AM to four thirty, uh, we're, the NEO, the newly elected officials training is going to be going on there, but it's by Zoom, so we can send questions. So now, it's, it's a full day, it's from eight AM to four thirty, so I'll give you something to, some coffee and a Danish in the morning and I'll feed you lunch. And, um, anyway, the things on there, I think, are really great. The, uh, some of the quasi judicial roles of, you know, councils, um, some of the ex parte contact, that's a big deal and it's coming up a lot in lawsuits around the, even the lower forty eight. That is, for instance, you meet with the constituent pro and it appears that you have made up your mind, the judges are going, can't do that. So that's, that's, I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing about that in Alaska. Roles and responsibilities of municipal officials, Open Meetings Act, there've been some changes. And also, I'm glad to see parliamentary procedures. You know, we've never really defined for, I think there's some of it, but I don't think it's clear. What we fall under with parliamentary procedures, the one I typically use has been Robert's rules. And I would tell you, my end game is to get to a point where that is adopted as a set of rules or whatever rules you see. And that'd apply to all boards or committees or whatever that you, um, appoint to, that they use the same parliamentary procedures as the council and that's who you, and most are already using it. But, you know, so I'm looking to formalize that, so that, that's going to be, and you'll be over, uh, in Anchorage, I believe. I'm supposed to be in, you know?
Yeah, you'll be there in Christmas.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's right, I was like, I was like.
What?
On the.
Thought there was training on the third?
Yeah.
The Friday before?
Yeah, there's that too.
Okay, there's that, but this is for, very specific to, yeah. So I thought, well, let's try that, we need to go in depth in something else, we can do a Zoom with AML or bring them over. You know, so, anyway. So I'm looking forward to that, that's a big deal. The other is for action.
Right, we'll put, you have a down in business.
Okay.
Space. That's it for communications items. The next item on the agenda would be citizens' comments. Is there anyone on Zoom? I don't believe.
Just joining in.
All right. And no call in, so anyone in the room? Looks pretty empty, so we'll move on to unfinished business, which is blank, under new business, which is, uh, consideration of Resolution Number R twenty five eleven dash oh one, a resolution of the Rome Common Council commemorating Veterans Day twenty twenty five. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Henderson, Miller. On the motion to adopt the resolution, is there any discussion on the resolution? There are no discussion on the resolution? Make a call or roll.
All right, sounds great. Uh, Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Lust.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is another round of citizens' comments. I see we have the same packed house as the previous round. We'll move on to Utility Managers Report, which is absent, City Managers Report, any additional?
The only thing, um, you know, I've pretty much covered everything, but on the, tomorrow at eleven AM at the post office, for the post office to, um, make sure I don't say this wrong, um, to all St. Joes. So VFW is doing that, um, just encourage if you can go out and just recognize our veterans tomorrow. And they said, doesn't matter if it's raining, so whatever, they're doing it. And so I do appreciate that. I did attend and appreciate you recognizing, um, our veterans. I did attach, uh, this share ranks first on Alaska veterans. If you look, it's amazing per capita how many veterans live in the state of Alaska. We are at eight percent, this, it is per capita. Uh, but you look at some of these other states, the veterans are here. You know, I was talking to a gentleman that was in Korea and he talked about, you know, some of his fears about, you know, his medical benefits and, um, you know, these are incredible people that fought for us. And, um, you know, I've told the ones I've seen, if you need us or we can help you or get to legislators, you stop by and we'll help, so, um, you know, but anybody look at that, I just found that pretty interesting about the stats of veterans, I would not have been that, had I not read it, that's, that's pretty interesting. I did ask you today, Dan, and we think that, you know, when you've been in the military and you've done all the lower forty eight and you're like, I need to change a life and shoot a moose, and they move up here.
And shoot a moose, yeah, that's next.
Well, that's all I have, so.
All right, uh, we'll then move on to council members' comments.
Commissioner Lust.
Um, you know, just, uh, looking forward to eventually getting an update on where we're at with taxi service. And I, again, I apologize, I missed the work session, uh, that we had, um, last time, but I know for many people have known that it's an important issue and I think it's important to try to continue to find inroads to make sure that people have access to transportation. And then I guess I'm just looking forward to additional discussions surrounding school budgets. And I know primarily that responsibility lies with the school board. But, uh, I think it's important that as, I think, council, that we are also getting an input in there. And for me personally, I know that's really making sure that our teachers, our paraprofessionals are, and our education support professionals are, are getting taken care of, it seems like far too often, they're kind of just left by the wayside, so that's what's on my mind.
Commissioner Green.
No, I was just wondering if.
Commissioner. Oh, sorry, Councilmember.
He hears that.
It's because I was looking at Adam, I mean, he's the.
It's their fault. No, I was just seeing if we're going to have any, uh, have the NOM Joint Managers Report anytime soon, I don't, if we had anything.
Haven't heard anything. There, as I understand, they're finishing up the audits, so I would expect, I'll make contact with Thomas and John and see if we can get some about the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was my, my next question because we haven't heard anything about the audits.
Yeah, they're, I understood they were pretty darn close about two weeks ago. Um, so I might call this week.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Miller.
Um, I was wondering if, um, our PR, is that a, um, what is the situation with that, because I know we had talked about. what is the situation with that, because I know we had talked about a part-time position, and then Megan had gotten trained with P R., who is covering her.
Information, it is my office, and about, we've actually developed a public information team,
uh-huh.
and it just, it's gonna work better having a team, so you have some redundancy if somebody's not here.
Yeah, so are we still working with the, um, consulting group?
I will be for a very short, short time period, and then probably moving on. I do not see the, the bang out of the buck, quite frankly. Um, and not being correct, I just don't see it. So, I'll let that contract end, um, our folks have come together great, you know, from the electronic side, uh, getting the information out, getting content out, so I'm watching that growth, so I'm gonna kind of test this for now, that I do think we can handle it, you know, from what I've seen the last thirty days, we can handle it terminally.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, but they did learn some things, and I've read, you know, like having color consistency, and all those kind of things, so there were some things learned.
Yeah, I think I would like to see some, um, local information too, as it's Native American Heritage Month.
Yes.
And it was just, um, International Inuit Day, so that's, um, something that I had. So I had also asked about P R. in the past, and I know Megan was the point of contact for a while, now that she's moved on, um, just wanted to follow up on that and make sure it doesn't get lost, um.
Can, can, um, Madam H R., I, I tap her on the shoulder a lot, can you help me with that? We've. Uh, basically, on some of the, um, there were two.
Basically, who had taken over, um, like, a lot of the public relations since Megan has left, um, because I, if I remember correctly, she had gotten trained with the firm we were working with, and I was wondering, you know, if we're gonna continue working with them, or who else has gotten trained, or what the plan has been since our.
So, since that's the most very recent development, the contract was supposed to run through the middle of December.
Yep.
We have just literally sat down to brainstorm future planning to move forward with, first designate any active projects that are happening, so that we can make sure that those are completed timely with anything that's out there, and then designate staff as we see necessary for cross-training, so it's not individualized.
Mm-hmm.
It's absolutely still on the table, and we're still discussing it.
Yeah, I would tell you right now, I have, I do not have intent to refill that position.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I will say the plan that's coming out, I mean, Megan did an awesome job, Stephanie, who runs, and this is on the planning side, the, you know, workforce development side.
The strategic planning and the, yeah.
First draft will, um, I literally got it today.
Yeah.
So, we're reviewing, and then we'll come back in December and give you guys kind of, here's where we are with the plan, but we're at a point of moving to action steps, um, you know, and Megan, um, I have a, basically, a contract with Megan for certain hours if I need her, she'll do that, of course, you know, you get her to help and try to bill her, and she's like, ah, you know, I'm like, thank you for the contribution, yeah. But, um, she's, particularly on the issues you brought up, or the, named the two, I just, the, the two events, and that's where I'm gonna need Cynthia to help me, because she's been doing, she, we've looked at training, that was kind of started about, um, you know, God, I just lost the word, totally lost the word, cultural differences, and trying to educate about certain things. Um, so, that's something we need to talk about, but on the P R. side of that, I'll get Cynthia, and, um, we can pull, we can pull Megan in too, but we can put some stuff together and get it out, absolutely, we can do that by.
Yeah.
Next week.
Yeah, um, and then also too, like, with the strategic planning as well, like, I'd like to see a lot of involvement with Quir, because they have community development programs.
Oh, they're in.
Yeah, and, um, just looking forward to.
They've been great the last two months, awesome.
Yeah, just looking forward to looking at that, and then I think also at one point, we had a potential resolution to work formally with federally recognized tribes. I don't remember the resolution number, but bringing, I'd like to see that be brought up again as well, um.
Probably talk about it in work session.
Work session, or just anything, yeah.
Yeah, we can do that, absolutely.
Um, and I think that's all.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Henderson.
No comments, thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, uh, although Mark is not here, um, he did have a couple of comments he wanted me to relay, which I said I would do, so, uh, the first comment was for the work session, but it looked like it wasn't going to fit in that space, uh, very well, so, uh, superintendent is reporting that vaping is getting worse, not better, despite efforts at the school to curtail it. I had previously, this is Mark talking, I previously suggested that we look into a city ban on sale of local vape devices. It was not supported by the former mayor or city council to take a further look into it. I would like to find ways to make getting vape devices harder to obtain for the kids. It is a major problem at the school that are far more addictive than cigarettes. They may get them mostly online, but if we have an ordinance that prevents vape devices in Gnome, there may be a way to block them from being sold online to Gnome also. That's, uh, one of two comments he had, and the other comment is, uh, uh, regarding the rising concern of the Nest customers disrupting the local residential neighborhood. The city needs to either have an officer stationed at the Nest, bless you, until they're all in for the night, preferable, or at a minimum, the officer should make fifteen to twenty minute stops over at the Nest shelter until everyone is in for the night. Not sure how much time that involves. Those were two comments that Mark asked me to relay.
Okay, one, well, um, I do, something that has come up with the vape thing before, so we'll talk to the attorneys about that, because they're, you see that everywhere now, particularly the buying online. On the, um, other issue, what was the last one, I just lost it. That was, did you make a note of that one?
The Nest.
I'll talk to, I'll talk to the police department, and just see, does anybody have any issue with me talking, obviously you're not voting, but talk to the police department about that, that, okay, and I may call Mark and just get more details, but, because I'm not, yeah.
Does Nest do any kind of policing or monitoring of folks in the immediate vicinity? I mean, it's a Nest facility that's managed by, what, Gnome Community Center, right?
Right.
And if their clients are creating disturbances in the immediate neighborhood, shouldn't that responsibility, or at least be an attempt by Gnome Community Center to manage that, uh, process?
Yeah, that's part of what I want to find out.
I mean, I mean, yeah, it'd be great, I think, increase patrols.
Lot of the issues.
That's an issue that N P D. could focus more attention, but I think.
Yeah.
It needs to be sort of a joint approach, not just, well, you know, if it's happening outside our doors, it's the city's responsibility.
Community Center.
Yeah, I, I don't know what the issues are.
Because I have, I have not heard any complaints, you know? Are we talking about the same place over near me?
No.
No.
No, maybe just.
Talking about, uh, the church facility down the street that's used for nests where they do soup.
Yeah, I'm not really hurt anything, but anyway, yeah, I'll start with them.
Sort of a joint discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, if there is a problem to manage it.
Okay, do we still have a community public safety officer, like, not necessarily a police officer, we don't have that, is that vacant, or is that just removed?
Yeah.
They cut that from the budget, doing budget cuts, sure that, and it was unfilled for a while.
Yeah, it had been a couple of years, yeah. I'd love to see a school resource officer, but also, you know, help out, you know, on other things in the summertime, and, and there's money for that that you can get, but, anyway, we'll, we'll talk to you.
All right, uh, on a personal note, uh, I spent, uh, this week, I went to Alaska Miners Association Conference, it was, uh, pretty interesting, and while I was there, uh, I made contact with, uh, uh, the Northern Institute of Engineering regarding, uh, research that they've been doing on dust, dust control. And so, I, they've offered to do a Zoom presentation to our working group. So, I'll get together with Lee and, and schedule, uh, see how that works into our schedule for the first part of Jan- January, I think, is when, uh, the working group was going to take a, a harder look at some of our, our dust issues. I think the presentation will be really good to give us all, uh, uh, common base of understanding and a, a language to share, to discuss the situation, and the options, uh, that we have. Obviously, we've just gone through a pretty terrible dust situation, uh, that, uh, thankfully has been ameliorated by the weather, but I think that it would be great if we could spot these situations, uh, coming a little bit ahead of, ahead of time relative to weather forecasts, and being a little more proactive to dealing with the dust, and, and perhaps, uh, uh, taking a look at similar requirements for, uh, when companies are hauling, uh, the track on dust under the pavement, seems like that's part of, uh, uh, the problem, as, as well as the problem that we have generally with.
I will say it's substantially exacerbated, particularly with the hospital, and obviously, I live right there on Great Richard, so, I don't drive a white car, I drive a tan vehicle. I mean, it coats it, but, uh, it's, that's a problem, that's, it's a big issue.
So, dust, we'll see what we can do. Anyways, that's all my comments for this evening. Appreciate y'all showing up and attending and attention.
I want to extend the opportunity for student representatives, Stasenko, to give comments.
Oh, yes.
I have not really been at the school due to volleyball traveling, we just had our regional tournament, and I was talking to my friend about, um, somehow making snack bags because of the SNAP benefits getting cut off, because I heard that the school in Bethel was doing it on the intercom when I was there, and I thought that was a really good idea.
Where was the volleyball tournament?
It was in Bethel.
How'd y'all do?
We, we got second, we lost by three in the fifth set.
But you had fun.
Yeah.
And you're going to state.
Awesome.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Motion carries, meeting adjourned, thank you all very much.